I'm going to get set your special session for May 31st, 2017 at this time. If everyone could please either silence or turn off their cell phones and please join me in the debate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Anne, we won't have any additions or deletions from the agenda. We're solely meeting to have a discussion about our 2017-18 budget discussion on some open items that we left it when our budget committee approved the budget for the 2017-18 year contingent upon some of these things we're going to talk about today because they were unknown and really happy to see you. The Chair of our Budget Committee, John Jones, here today. Don't see any of the other members who aren't able to make it. With that, I think I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Anne to have the discussion. She's put together a list of the things that we believe are the ones that we're still needing to be decided upon.
That's correct. So there, I think the audience can see the list on the screens there. Mostly what we're talking about are impacts to the general fund contingency and again, open discussion or decision topics that we needed more time on during our budget meetings. So this list is not necessarily every single thing that may change before adoption. These are the list of items that needed to make, have a decision made, but specifically could impact general fund contingency.
Did Lee now make a decision on the SCOED contract? I don't see it on this.
To my knowledge, there's been no decision made on that. However, that contract decision will not impact the budget. It's already, there's already an amount in materials and services in the economic development fund. So whatever decision is made on contract payments there, it won't impact the budget.
It does have the funding source.
Yes, it's all in that same category, materials and services.
So, you know, we might be a little here and there on this today, but I went ahead and just marked the things that I think are going to flow fairly quickly. We have been, you know, a list here, but I'll see if we can get concurrence on this. Starting with the top item, the current general fund contingency is at $175,028. I believe, unless there's another discussion, that our previous transfer to the 408 fund is not necessarily going to need to happen at this time, the bridge work, the $54,000. Then dropping down to the American Tower lease bonus payment, that's a given, we've signed that, I don't know where we're at.
I'm beginning of it, we actually got funded yesterday.
Very good.
So we have that money in our hand now.
Okay.
So that will be an increase to our beginning fund amounts.
Perfect. Then the reduced Fund 106 transfer on the insurance agent of record for at least this year, the $11,000 there. And then I have a couple items marked on, well, you know, those are primarily revenue sources, but the Fairgrounds HVAC open request might be a place to start, but I want to be proposing that we include that in the budget as being funded. The airport state pavement management program grant, while I don't think, because I haven't heard from Tom, that we have those matching funds completely secured from all the different sources. There was going to be an outreach to Simplot as well as the $3,000 that we received as a result of extending the lease agreement, et cetera. I think we can get there on that. So to me, it goes back to the two main items and fellow commissioners, you can tell me where you're at on this, but is the funding and the fund potential for the Oregon emergency management position and which alternative would be selected, if any? And then the other one is the amount of public health support dollars. So that's, that's how I analyze this work today.
A tip for the audience to know, the Fund 106 transfer insurance agent of record, we didn't discuss that during our budget thing, it was discussed later. Typically, we contract with, I'll let Jay send us a technical narrative for all the folks.
We've contracted with Great Basin Insurance for several years now at the level of $18,275. So this amount is what the general fund's contribution to that would be. And we're going to take that function in-house this year, see how it goes, give it a trial run. But I, we'll have a report next year, but I think we can, we can get through this year and be able to evaluate whether, what we should do in the future.
And sure, we were contracted with Great Basin and then they worked with the insurance. We drop out that middle person and Jay would directly go through the insurance to go through the third part.
Right. Yep. So Commissioner, did you have something you wanted?
Well, no, you're pretty close to where I'm at, I guess. The ones that added to revenue, the grant should alleviate the $54,000 transfer to the Breville Bridge, so that's $54,000.
Yep.
Then the American Tower lease is $75,000 in the positive also, as we build on down. I'm in support of the Fairgrounds HVAC open request because we've found these other dollars, these other dollars have come in. Agent of record, the $11,000 there, I'm, I'm okay with putting that, taking that out and showing that as a savings, but if for some reason partway through we find out that it's not going to work, we'll have to go to contingency and run that and go out for an agent of record. I'd really long to keep a close eye on that myself.
Yeah.
Have a little bit of concerns on that.
And we had some fun discussion on the Oregon Emergency Management Position because there was a proposal by the Sheriff's Department to have a full-time deputy and a full-time OEM, and we haven't really clarified the direction. We only have the emergency management.
I totally agree with you, Commissioner. If you don't mind, I'd just like to propose as to whether or not those items we did talk about are ones we agree on, and then we're going to narrow down the focus to the OEM as well as the public health.
I agree with the direction. If we talk about all of them and then make the better decision on funding after we've talked about them all, instead of just taking one and saying, yes, we funded this, this, this. Because when you get to the end, you don't have anything left. So if we talk about them all and then go back to priority section.
Okay. Well, all I'm looking at is revenue except for the Fairgrounds. To add, the whole discussion here, I think, was all brought about as a result of making sure we met our goal of contingency, which was $200,000. So we've talked about these revenue areas, these revenue or not needed in other area funds that bring that contingency back up. Now we're going to talk about expenses, which is OEM and public health.
So we're able to do that with the computer. Why don't we just chase the numbers exactly what you guys are saying?
Yeah.
Put the $54,000 into the contingency and then just work right on down, and then we can look at the first expense side of it, of what we want to do and...
Okay. So I think if I'm listening correctly, you guys are all kind of concurring with these items, which right now would put our contingency total at $300,000.
I believe we are, Anne, except for what Commissioner Kessler said about expenses to start working that number down. I don't know if he's there on the HVAC system for the Fairgrounds or not. I think we're all there on the revenue side or the savings side, so.
Okay, so we'll take that back up.
Okay. So you...
I'm not saying that HVAC is coming from, I'm asking.
You just wanted to see that.
Yeah, we're just, that's why I'm here. Just to work through this stuff. So you want to talk about emergency management first in that position or that proposal?
The Sheriff and I had a discussion yesterday. It was, the Sheriff brought up the topic of a deputy and then doing some changing for the emergency management. I'd like to, of course, do, all of us have the same idea. Do we have a Sheriff explaining what his current proposal is?
And we're talking about option three.
Well, it's no different than what we requested during the budget meeting.
Right, and that was option three.
Well, the one that we thought was feasible would be the civilian coming in.
Yeah.
Is that what?
So that's on the back of what you got yet?
I took that option off of your paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Yep.
Just over here, but always conscious about audience knowing what we're calling the discussion.
Okay. What do you want to visit about? I'll tell you where I'm at on this. I recognize the need for the emergen, I mean, it's mandated for us to have an emergency management person. And today might be a good time with Paul and the Sheriff here to talk about it, but I think the bigger things, it kind of reminds me of what we went through last year when we were talking about the nuisance and all the different elements that we were talking about that position might bring from animal control to so on and so forth. And what we determined during that process is we weren't ready to make a decision, and during the course of the year, we did make a decision. So I'm kind of there. I would rather see us potentially plug the figure in that we've got for that into contingency and have that identified in the contingency that it's going to be something we fund relative to OEM and the deputy, the Sheriff's Department deputy position. Because I, I'm not here ready today to say, I think we ought to go with option three, go into civilian and then put the deputy that's been doing that work back into a full-time deputy position. That's where I'm at right now.
I, I'm right there pretty much with you, Commissioner, as I worked on this yesterday in reading the ORS, the requirement, and what the minimum functions include. And what we're, what we're going to be as we grow up, I guess, is what we're saying is, we have thought of different proposals on that to do it as a civilian in the Sheriff's Department. We have talked possibly in another department, possibly public health. We have things in flux right now. So I would lean more similar to what we done last year and sort of pull a committee or whatever together to make that recommendation, but secure that money within contingency and then work on what we want it to really look like. We know what it's mandated to do it, put it high on the priority list and get that proposal to us.
Yep. I'm coming up. We're talking about kind of the same, except on different sides of the table. If we went with a full-time OEM person, then that would free up one position to be a sheriff full-time. That's, that's the emphasis.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. I want you on the same page here.
Yeah, and it's just a matter of calculating that out. And Sheriff, help me out here and undersheriff, you know, part of this, and we haven't had a chance to really visit on these things since the budget hearings, but, or the budget workshops, but I'm still struggling and today is probably not the place to talk about this, but part of the reason I'm not ready just to make a, just to bring the wrong decision instead of put this into contingency is when our OEM director from the state, help me with his name again.
Clint.
Clint.
Clint Feller.
Yeah, Clint Feller. Great guy, learned a lot from him that day, but one of the comments that he said really stuck with me, and it leads me to wonder how we handle this additional position, because we all know it needs to be somewhere. We recognize that. But I think he said something to the effect that Lake County is doing a tremendous job with its OEM program. And then Daniel was asked how much time he spent at it, and I think he said somewhere around 20% of his regular duty hours are spent on it. I think that's what I remember hearing. So as we look to have a permanent position in OEM, and one of the biggest things that, and I'm no OEM expert with, on the state OEM, dealt with emergency management my whole previous career, once the plan's in place and ready to be updated as needed, the workload is going to change. So going forward, I'm just kind of curious is, do we really clearly understand how much of a full-time position that's going to require if we hire someone full-time? And will it fit someplace else that people can do other duties that are needed along with that? But not in a deputy position necessarily that really requires that deputy to be available to you to use for being on the road all the time? I think we all clearly agree that doesn't work for, for the current position to be tied up doing OEM as well as deputy services.
In my opinion, it's a full-time position. Daniel does 20% of it because that's what I allow him to do. So with that being said, we have to make a decision or the Sheriff's Office has to make a decision, you know, what's a priority? Serving the citizens of Lake County 80% of the time and then doing OEM 20% of the time or serving the citizens of Lake County for 50% of the time? With the calls of service rising and the constant need for a deputy, that's about as much as we can allow him to do right now. So as we have seen down the road, OEM position is suffering because of his other responsibilities.
Well, Sheriff, I don't think you get any argument whatsoever from this board on the need for your, the deputy services. And I guess I'll just conclude with what I was saying by saying that I think a lot of this discussion, as Commissioner Winters alluded to, I think going forward, whether it's a small group that's convened, but I've reached out to some of our other partners in emergency management, whether it's in the wildfire, you know, flood, et cetera, those who deal with it equal to what we do here at the county, they don't necessarily have to make a plan like we do and keep it updated. But I think bringing some of those in to have a clearer understanding of how they view, because it's all connected, there's, there's partnerships and all of this, as Daniel would tell us, you know, he reaches out to all the partners throughout the county for emergency management services. We're not a standalone when an emergency happens and quite frequently, we're asked to participate when an emergency happens, like a wildfire and that type of thing. So while I appreciate the thought that it's a full-time position initially, I don't see any evidence going forward that it's going to be a full-time position in the long term. That's just my, my two cents.
And again, Commissioner, in my opinion, it definitely is going to be a full-time position.
Yeah.
We may not be a standalone position when an emergency occurs, but we are definitely a standalone position as far as the responsibility of OEM on the county shoulders.
Okay.
And I'll add, I've always kind of toyed with it being full-time or three-quarter time, someplace in that range, but except what you say is full-time.
Would you disagree with that or?
No, I absolutely think it's full-time. The other thing that I don't think that's encompassed in that, that Clint didn't speak of, nor did Deputy Tag speak of, is Daniel gives us about 140%. So he's only utilizing 20% of his deputy time, but he's making up for that other time on his days off because he's traveling to a meeting or a required conference or a required training for OEM, where he's having tabletop exercises with public health or at the hospital. And he's doing that the six hours before he comes on shift for his deputy duties. And so it's only pulling 20% of his normal day away, but there's another 80% of time that he's pulling from somewhere. And some of it's in his, in his personal time that he would have away from it, or he doesn't get a day off that week because he's got these other things. And so, so the 20% isn't a true picture of...
Yeah, that was Dan, that was Daniel's.
No, no, I, but what I'm saying is, at the, at the end of the year, when you look at Daniel's wages, you can clearly see that there's a whole bigger picture there, and those dollars are being, coming from somewhere for a reason. And that's typically what it comes down to.
Well, let's, since Commissioner Kessler alludes to it, we're on camera, let's not leave this discussion without telling the camera how much we appreciate all the extra effort Daniel puts into that position. He has done, he has a passion for it. I visited with him multiple times and that is his calling. Yeah, he loves it and he does a good job at it, so.
I'll add that last winter, I went to FEMA two day, FEMA and Oregon Emergency Management Session, mostly because Daniel could not go because of the thing. And that two, two days was extremely intense and laid out all the stuff that had to be done and so forth. So it's more than just going to a work session, I'll do, just going to a work session, I then going home, spending several weeks doing stuff, that's a learning work session. It's pretty demanding.
Well, as the board where I'm at, I'm looking at a position on a person.
Yeah.
Looking at a position, I'm looking at what the minimum is, what the requirements are, what the ORS is, and what we need to set up to meet those rules, regulations. We do have an employee right now, but that's what he really fights.
We're talking about position.
But we're talking about position. What is we have to have because it's required, Board of Commissioners required to have urgent OEM. And so as we build this, we need to build it for what it's going to be from now on.
And I'll be able to apply for it if it's civilian.
Absolutely. But, but that's where I'm at, just, I mean, a little bit more probably just sort of cut and dried is, we have ORS, we know what the minimums are, we know that we get dollar for dollar on the ground, and then we can build from there. But there is other players. There's the town of Lakeview, there's the federal agencies, there's state agencies, there's players that come to the table, and we can hopefully at this point, if we set money to the side, bring all the players together, the Sheriff's Department, everybody together and come up with what will work for Lake County as a whole for emergency management. And there might be some really good suggestions, there might be other partnerships out there that can make this work pretty well. So that, that's where I'm at, is we can discuss so many things about it. I am definitely not an expert on it, read the ORS best I can, but there's people out there that are experts if you come to the table and help present to us and say, we'd like for you to support it this way. That's, that's where I'm at. So I'd like to set the money aside and continue to see if they'll have that brought to us towards bill act.
And my initial guess was we'd focus on the OEM as an own entity, and that would free up Person X to be a full-time deputy.
Yep.
That's, that's baseline.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
The reason why we're having the discussion, you get it.
Because public safety is number one.
So if we put within the contingency by an item, within contingency a note that we're going to set aside roughly that 72,000, 73,000, is that, Cam, is that a number Jay that you guys were talking about?
Because math becomes fuzzy.
It does.
Yeah. We're going to have a certain amount that we're going to continue, this was the cost of doing option three. But that included that deputy's part, that deputy's time.
Well, the deputy's time is already built in, so it's already an expense. So this is an additional expense to general fund if we have this other position. However, contingency would just be that new total, and then when a decision is made, that amount would pull out on a resolution. So I don't think you even have to identify an amount right now. We just know there will be ongoing...
It'd be noted within the minutes of our meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So for not, not for a decision, but is that a good place to start to jump to the next one? We're all three there, so.
So right now, everything states got us both with that position and that grant funding. It's just the way we've been doing it for quite a few years now.
Okay, great. And so then the next big one is public health. The, the transfer that we went with was $218,000. By this sheet here, the new total, just for discussion, was moved down to $163,000. We're in reorganizational mode with public health right now. I, myself, I believe, I believe we leave the full amount, you know, I think this will create some discussion. The 218, and that's a transfer amount, doesn't mean we have to transfer the whole amount throughout the year if we reorganize or whatever, but it's there if we have to, if, if through looking at reorganization, if it doesn't work, we're tasked with continuing operations. So I'm sort of leaning to just leave the full transfer amount there, and that will start the discussion.
Yeah, but the 218 is what the Budget Committee decided on. We haven't really, there's been talk about it, but there hasn't been a decision.
Yeah, the, I have nothing to do with my work here today that's about to discuss.
Yeah, I think that's the primary reason we're here today, because it was put in the budget at 218 up, well, it was put in the budget at 228. We reduced it by $10,000 during the budget meetings, and that's up from $107,000. And so, you know, there's a hundred ways to look at that, but, you know, the fact that it's at 218, I think, does beg some discussion, and I think we need to recognize upfront and be very clear, we understand there was some new costs associated to public health that they had no control over, whether it was salary increases, insurance increases, curves increases, the administrative fee increases as a result of other actions that we've taken. So that number bumped up, I don't know that it really hit on 163, that 163, there wasn't a whole lot of scientific business that went into that number, but I think it's a fair number to say just based on that, not talking about revenue that was lost from other grants and other opportunities that caused it to actually go to the 218. That's still, as you look through those multiple budgets, it's one of the more interesting budgets I think all of us have looked at over the years because of the number of different areas that they have to balance out at. So I'm going to throw out here, correct, Commissioner, because if we bump that back up to the 218, we're then at 260 with the contingency, and we just had a discussion on, I don't know, around the $75,000 of commitment that we might, may make sometime during the year back into the OEM world. So that 260, and taking that into account as identified money, reduces us down to 185 in contingency. It doesn't reduce us now, but potentially could if we make a decision this year sooner than later to do something that are OEM responsibilities. So with that said...
I think you're actually going to be a little bit higher than that. Really, you're looking at $315,000 in contingency right now, less $75,000 for OEM.
And if we bump that up to 163 to 218, then we're going to drop it.
It's already in there. That 315 includes that public health support's at $218,000.
So that's where the math yesterday didn't work.
Yes, I was going to come at you, I was going to go that far.
And you're, you're really good with that.
Yeah, I learned you those figures and taught you in.
The 218 was the last decision.
Right, so right now, public health support's in this budget, 218. We haven't changed it, and contingency's sitting at 315.
So all discussions on the sideline have to be decided on, we don't change the decision.
Okay?
Okay, so, and then $15,000 for the open request would be a reduction and take us down to $30828, correct? And take us down to three hundred thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight, correct? And that's, that's fully the transfer being at two eighteen. That's funding everything, that's all revenues that we, new revenues we know are there. Expenses are there. And we'd be setting contingency at three hundred. And then if we have documented basically through this meeting that we would consider once we pull this group together, O E M position, could be an impact of around seventy-five thousand. We'd still be at two twenty-five.
Well, this is one of those deals where I'm going to defer to my two fellow commissioners. One is the liaison to public health and the other, uh, has been studying this quite a bit as well. I'm not comfortable leaving the two eighteen. I am not comfortable because of future things that we're going to be looking at. We're setting a precedence by raising that budget, general fund contribution by a significant amount of money. A hundred and one thousand dollars to be exact from this past year. And to me, there is, there is no, there is no road back from that. The road back that I see, which I came prepared to talk about today just for, for discussion here among the two of you, is doing a similar thing to what we just talked about with O E M. And that is pull back a chunk of that, whether it's fifty-five thousand or whatever amount would be agreed upon if we could agree on it and put it back into contingency to support public health. But.
Well, that's not a bad idea.
Well, you know.
It goes with what you said earlier. It was a two eighteen, but only payout was needed.
Yeah, and, and this would be, I, 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 I'm seeing where you're going. Once that number is plugged in there, everybody latches on to that number if we.
No, not everybody.
Well.
It's a, it's a one-time, a one-year factor due to some expenses past year. We all recognize that.
I, you, you've got my interest, honestly Commissioner, because of, um, that's one of the things as you're looking at reorganization is people look at numbers and they, that's the number they see and that's the number they latch on to. And, and reorganization, my, my thoughts on reorganization is, um, at the long time would be six months, January one. Short time could be October or maybe even sooner than that. We look at it, Commissioner, it's been doing some work on that. So we could adjust that amount sort of comparable to that. And then if we end up with continuing, we just go to contingency and fund what is necessary.
Which, which as a board, that, you know, just literally for the record, and Paul's sitting there. And Paul, you know, as this board came together some nearly eleven years ago, we got out of that business. But this is a different situation. We experienced it last year, we've already talked about it with O E M. You know, we ask people to budget and that we deal with real numbers. So, you know, once, once upon a time, just a little history lesson for all of us, that we were constantly going to contingency, doing resolutions because we needed to balance a budget. Well, that's not the issue now. You know, it's obvious, especially since the two eighteen's built in there, that we're meeting our contingency goal and then some. So I don't want force to, to, to talk about historically the fact that we wanted to account for all these costs in the budget and not hit contingency. But yet now I'm suggesting that we do it that way. But there's special circumstances. It's all the uncertainty surrounding what our program's going to look like in this next year. So I just wanted to get that out there because Paul is probably, he's, he's probably churning thinking, well, they didn't, they, they went a whole different direction years ago and we stayed with that, so.
So I have a question on the public health and the transfers to public health. Um, is that usually done quarterly or do they have some big hits the first quarter or anything like that? Or I know it's all revenue driven as their revenues come in on their billing and everything. But is there anything like, like in the jail, we do a contract write-off so it hits that transfer right away? Is there any big thing like that?
It's not quarterly. And then this year, with unique circumstances, we will have to transfer more at June thirty. Um, in theory, the idea works to put that in contingency. However, that public health budget will have to balance at June, before we adopt. So their options are decrease expenses or increase revenue. And how would you propose if they do that?
So now, now what real just came out. It has to be balanced, we have to get balance budget.
So if we think they, if we think they can find that additional revenue, then we plug that in hopeful.
Well, and I've been very clear that I wanted to see this because if we, you know, where we're at with, you know, all the discussions around, uh, the reorganization. But revenue to me is where it needs to be.
Okay, and then it's just known that we, this is a shot in the dark on the revenue.
Well, it is. Uh, but at the same time, then we're not sitting there going line item by line item, reducing this and this and this.
Absolutely.
But the revenue has more promise than the redemption. You know, they're on a full-time shift there. So I, I'm not suggesting, and a lot of those costs as we alluded to earlier, were out of their control. You know, they got hit with those costs just as part of the new year budget. So I would like to, I would like to propose, I don't know that we need to go the full way because I'm not certain on the timing. I'm not certain on all the available dollars, but I know there's dollars out there depending upon what happens with this organizational change. I would like to recommend that we reduce it by, or we, we, we change that figure by thirty-five thousand instead of fifty-five thousand.
And you think of potential federal dollars, so it increased the revenue side of their budget on federal dollars coming in by thirty-five thousand. Because we, as Ann says, we have to show it in the budget increase.
But where's that federal, at what time in the budget year does that federal dollars come in?
Well, none of us know for sure, but we've heard about it, so.
We don't, and we don't know on the organization when or if we might get there. So, you know, we're just simply saying there's an opportunity for there to be an increase in revenue. We'll show that as an increase, we'll show it in a reduction.
Are we talking about the corporate access hospital federal revenue?
I'm not, honestly Commissioner, I'm not talking about any one particular thing. There's Medicare that the hospital quote unquote would qualify for that we don't as a county. There's, there's different sources and I'm no expert in it. Just, just to simply say, we think there's an opportunity.
Well, where I'm going, and talking with the hospital on federal funding, we're in personnel, that comes a year, there's a year span if that could catch us.
Well, if we allow for it to be in the contingency account as identified to support public health, it won't catch us. I hear what you're saying about if we were counting on it and absolutely had to balance our budget based on that, that would be a misnomer on our part. But I think I'm, I'm comfortable with, with showing that in that way.
If I show the revenue, it increases our contingency, so it's still there, it's just.
Well, thank you. Two hundred and eighteen thousand, we have a decision. Now we, now we modify that decision, but we're still talking about two eighteen identified someplace, at least part of it.
No, I mean, well, that approved budget amount will maintain in this year's document. So that two eighteen will show there in that approved budget amount. The new adopted total would show a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So yes, you would see it in the budget document.
Yeah, but we're talking about putting it in contingency, a fair margin there. Does that one hurt?
It'll be reflected in the minutes from today and that's why that contingency totals three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So it'll still be there.
It'll be there as well as.
I just wanted to make sure that'll be documented.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're all saying the same thing, we're just.
We have two outstanding items that are going to be in contingency.
Yes.
For future expenses to the county general fund.
I'm fully supportive, if we don't need to spend it, we don't spend it. We have to identify it.
We are so fortunate to be where we're at today to be able to have these discussions and be able to look at the future enhancing services to our community and all this. So what are you going to do?
Instead of, if we do, still have a tight budget.
Yep.
So the last one hands on is the solar, or the solar, the airport state payment management program match of seventy-four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So the lease amount that was, came in afterward, was that three thousand or thirty-five hundred?
It's three thousand. However, the beginning fund balance that they predicted did not include a significant fuel purchase that they have made. So they're not going to have the beginning fund balance to support their operations that they predicted. Um, it makes me a little bit wary to, um, increase that lease revenue and then show this total match in that fund.
So what, so Ann, this is new news, so what are you proposing?
I, I would support that general fund if need be supports that payment.
Okay, because it's, it's an incredibly good project.
Yeah, we're getting a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of payment management at both Paisley and Lakeview Airport for seventy-four hundred dollars.
Yeah, we're not going to turn that amount over, so we four hundred.
So let's do that. If we agree, we just do that.
Justice says Watson III military H forty-sixes filed over. I thought surely it's coming across.
Boy, they went right that direction, did they?
Directly over it and kept on going.
Yep.
That was right by the square.
They weren't forty-sixes, they were forty-sevens.
Forty-sevens. I'm reflecting back about forty-five, fifty years.
Yeah, so, so am I, but. Where did that put us at in? Just like to turn around and look at those.
I saw one of those.
Three twenty-eight, four oh three.
Very good.
So for the work that you believed, and John's here, uh, that you believed we needed to work on, we have another item that's called other issues. This is where we can talk about things we might not have, when we brainstormed, captured.
Um, there are some things that were decided here. Well, the railroad fund is going to change significantly before we adopt with the good work on the grant. Um, that, that impacts community development, it impacts, um, the industrial. No, it's, it's not going, but we'll talk about that before we adopt. Um, there might be other railroad liability issues. We don't know yet, so it's not, it's not a discussion topic quite yet. I really just put that other issues on there to talk about the airport because I wasn't sure whether we'd go to general fund or not.
Yeah, okay.
I, so that's why.
So we've, we've met your desire. And Commissioners, do you, do you either have items that, you know, for the general fund that you thought we needed to talk about?
Though the, not at this point. The only potential this has, Ann sort of alluded to is railroad. Right now, we can't, we don't know if any, or that's going to be.
We'd be speculating right now.
Yeah.
Okay, as far as my, that's, you've done great work. So I think we've.
Jay, you're, you're looking.
Do we want to talk about a potential cost increase in the district attorney's office? We made a decision long ago about having an office manager in there. If we do that, it could increase it from zero to maybe as much as six thousand dollars.
Explain.
Same.
I, I, that was quick. Yeah, but that's one. Uh, elaborate a little bit more.
Um, we have budgeted for, um, what we've historically had in there, a paralegal and, and assistant. And we're, we're finally ready to maybe implement an office manager position in there which would be an exempt department head status employee. Um, and depending on the experience and qualifications, that, that position could be paid higher than what we budgeted for.
The subject matter for the audience is that the D A is a state official. The staff in there are county officials. And we've never had a department head or support department head that would manage the county employees in conjunction with addressing the D A duties.
And take care of the budget.
Take care of the budget and do the personnel, H R things, all that scenario. Many years ago, we decided we needed some accounting employee responsible for county staff in that area. So that's the concept of a, a office manager.
So just, that, that, that's a good synopsis of it Commissioner. So Jay, just to clarify, when you said add an office manager, we're not adding a position, we're changing a position to an office manager.
Correct.
I see taxpaying citizens of Lake County such as Mr. Parks out there, his wheels turning and saying, man, they're adding a position? So let's just clarify that. Very good. Anything else?
So the subject is do we maintain status quo? We haven't made a, a former decision, always like that before. Are we going with status quo or are we going with office manager?
You know, we, we, Board of Commissioners have looked at reorganization in the past and reorganized and reorganized. And we're at that point, it's time for it to be reorganized. My question is, Jay or, or Ann, within the categories materials and services, is there any monies there as that budget came in that can be moved from that category up to salaries? Uh, we know there's the, the two grants, our victims have a big grant in there. And there's another one, I think, is there any, is there any room or does that need to be in there? Is there any room within that budget to cover part of that or all of that?
There's potential for that for sure. Um, I would say at this point in time right now, the salaries category that is budgeted with two and a half positions in it may end up being sufficient depending on when hires are made, um, levels of insurance and things like that. So I don't think this decision has to be made yet.
Yeah.
And, and if, if we find out down the road, a resolution that could easily move appropriations can happen.
Okay.
And because it's of that nature, I don't think we need a motion in a second. I think we need concurrents just to, yeah.
Work.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
We wanted to be there.
Okay.
And the current status quo for the audience, uh, we have a paralegal that's not field, so that's in the budget to do that. And we have a victims advocate, advocate, uh, advocate grant for. Uh, was originally intended to be halftime. And we still got the grant on to go with that halftime. And then the third person, we talked about office manager as organization.
Yep.
Yeah.
So. Go ahead.
The, the office manager would be replacing the paralegal position. So the other position that you didn't describe was the legal secretary assistant.
Yeah. John, did you have anything that you wanted to say since you made the track down? We really appreciate it.
No. Oh, hey Commissioner, I'm sorry.
No, I, that's exactly, I was going to make sure that one of our budget members either threw, threw a rock at us or gave us the nod, he gave three quarters of a nod. It didn't.
Oh, I didn't throw a rock at you, might have hurt anything.
Okay, Ann, you don't have anything else?
No, thank you again. Um, if people were to look at that contingency total and, and wonder why it's high, I think we've got the clarification of why it's a little bit higher than usual. The other thing we didn't talk about today, so put it on the record is the other uncertainty is with the bill payment. And that was the emphasis all along, to have that contingency higher than our historic because there's so much uncertainty around a significant source income for general fund.
Significant. Yeah.
Well, then that seventy-five thousand is one-time revenue.
Yes.
That amount, that seventy-five thousand that come in, that helped us to get to the three twenty-eight, you take that off of there and all of a sudden we're down to two fifty. So that's the one-time revenue source that gave us. We have to be cautious as we add capacity and things because of.
It's costly.
Yeah.
Absolutely, not getting S R S anymore. Look, one question. I wanted to have this meeting so we can get everything, cause I've finalized before we adopt the budget. On the school head aspect, that's his lottery dollars as opposed to general fund, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And there's some recent funds there if we decide to renew the contract.
Yes.
Okay.
It's budgeted in materials and services and products and programs and fund two fifteen. Okay? Um, just to give you a little timeline of the budget process, next week we will have budget hearings on what the budget committee approved. on what the budget committee approved. So June sixth, we'll be here in the courthouse and then June seventh at Port Rock. And so that location was made in the paper a couple of weeks ago, I think. And again, that won't, we won't talk about the changes before adoption. It's just summarizing what the budget committee approval was.
Right, and then we're still scheduled for the twenty-first for budget adoption.
Yes, so these changes will be incorporated into that adoption document along with some other funds that we talked about, impacts that were made here.
So on the SCOWET, it's in the budget for adoption or have we made it? We probably haven't really made a decision on extending that contract.
No.
No?
No.
But it won't change the budget when you decide that. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. The budget is fine, but yes, you need to decide.
I said, pardon me, two fellow commissioners said, we need to make a decision before the end of this year.
Yep, well, way before then. We're coming up on June and we do.
My back to you tomorrow.
All day long. Okay, well, if there is anything else for what we had the special session planned for, we will adjourn it at ten minutes to eleven.